Everybody on your best behavior. Good evening, like welcome everybody to this evening's Board of Public Works and Safety for November tenth. Starting with roll call, Matt, clear treasure, please.
Aaron Listemberger is absent. Paul?
Here.
Becker?
Here.
Milner?
Here.
Morrow?
Here.
Thank you. Like to move on to minutes for approval for October twenty seventh. Do we have a motion?
Will we approve the minutes?
Second, we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Board members, do we have anything this evening?
None. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, Donnie.
Thank you, Your Honor, I've got two project updates. The first one is the East Jefferson Street Water Main Construction Project. We've had discussions with the contractor over the last two weeks. They have one live tap that they have to make off the the new twelve inch main that was supposed to happen today, but of course the weather had different ideas, so they will attempt that again tomorrow. At that point, that is at the Columbus and East Jefferson Street intersection. At that point, then all they have to do is connect the pipe to the existing main. And then they have a connection that they have to make at Kingston and Judison. So the hope was to have all that completed this week. And they have contracted with E and B paving to do the actual street cuts scheduled for next week. And that may move around a little bit due to the weather. He's trying to finish up projects himself, so hopefully we'll have that secured before the real winter hits, so. The next project was the Rain Garden on the south end of the detention pond at the just south of neighborhood center that is complete. Looks pretty good and I think it'll be a good benefit to the area. It's actually already doing some dewatering, it's following the rip system down and dewatering that area, so I think it's be a win-win for everybody here on that project, so.
I had a conversation with being buyers earlier this week, he commented on how things were looking and how much they appreciate the results of the detention fund there. Just continues to find nothing but positives and got an opportunity for another home to go in there between the the two homes that are sitting there now, so thank you.
Yep.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
Thanks, thank you. Dan.
Um, just wanted to update the board on the two thousand twenty five CCMG street repaving projects, these are the projects that were completed last summer in August. We contracted with E and B paving for one million one hundred ninety eight thousand dollars and well, one million one hundred ninety eight thousand two hundred and twenty four dollars and twenty eight cents. We paid a total of two point three four miles. We updated sidewalks, a quarter mile of sidewalks that the contractor performs and then the street department performed even more. And then we updated seventeen ADA curb ramps. We did have a change order for the pedestrian crossing at Gibson and Lincoln Way, that was the one I talked about last June. We had some overruns and we had some underruns on the initial project at the end of the day when the dust finally settled. We owed the contractor seventeen thousand seven hundred and seventy six more dollars and thirty two and eighty two cents. That brings the total cost of these projects to one million two hundred and sixteen thousand and one dollar and ten cents.
So one and a half percent variance, that's pretty darn good.
I got one and a half too, so must be doing something right.
There you go.
Thank you.
So do we, do we need to? Yeah, do we need to do that? Yes, so we need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the change order.
We have a motion in a couple seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, thank you, Dan. Dennis.
Tonight I'm gonna discuss five sixteen Pennsylvania Avenue. This property had before the property owner actually did anything, he had already passed his thirty day, there's twenty five dollar twenty five hundred dollar fine put on property. He sent me an email shortly after meeting that he came and discussed that and said he was gonna perform the work, I said that's fine, I have to do the inspections. He has yet to actually complete the work to adequate efficiency. He hasn't even touched the deck that was supposed to be fixed and he replaced the stairs and attached it to the rotting deck membrane member and done one of the ceiling wrappers and he wants to present himself. Off, I'm up here, basically he's past his ninety days. We have the option to do another thousand dollar fine or if you so choose, hire a contractor on the work properly.
And so he applied new material to rotting material?
He replaced the stair stringers and some of the treads, well, all the treads. Not to code. And as I supplied pictures, you can see that there's videos, the the treads are loose, the risers. I bumped one with my toe and it fell, wasn't even attached. And then he notched the string to get up around the deck and threw it into the rod of wood, so. He hasn't done anything to code on that. And I'm not passing it.
Okay.
So. He would like to talk apparently, so.
Just. Bye. Please state your name there.
I am Jerry Heck. Uh, live at one oh four Wood Street, La Paz, Indiana. And I own, I own a property at five sixteen Pennsylvania Avenue. I did disassemble and reconstructed the stair trips, steps from top to bottom. I did uncut stringers on the sides which is different from what was there. Reason why I did that, it it spans without having center supports. Plus it takes away, probably the other steps before, the treads were notched. The problem with that would take away the integrity of the two by twelve. And in time, the the two by twelve cracks. Okay, these are solid stringers. They'll go from top to bottom. And the only time they're notched are notched within the balcony be. That's how the old one was and it was attached that way. So the only part that was notched that he's top and five is at the very top. The rim of that balcony is notched around a two by twelve to get it up in there in in between the the floor joists of balcony. That's the only place I notched it. Now the stringer is all, all the treads are all new. And I'd put the railing, two by two railings up the side. And brought brought it up to coat. The coat was thirty inches, that old gray board is the original railing and up and above on the balcony. I added another I had another two by four, two by four vertical because the code, he says the code commercial is supposed to be forty two inches at the guardrail at the balcony. And I do, I asked that wasn't quite right, actually it's residential because the unit is less than five units in a building that's considered residential, but I went with the forty two inch. So all that new lumber is all new. All that. Only thing that's gray is the old, old part. Now, there's nothing wrong with the balcony. The balcony is totally solid. And matter of fact, it's it's tied into the roof above the apartment above one side. There's only cantilevered over the one side where it's fully supported. That balcony is no problem. And he never mentioned to me about doing anything with the deck, and it was never mentioned to me.
It was in the original order.
No, he said bringing up the coat, I never seen anything about the deck. Never seen it until that last statement he made to me on the new bill. Well, the reason why I didn't want to tear it for the deck is that it'll tear into the integrity of that balcony and cause, I had a lot of problems with leakage on the roof on the one side because it's tied into that roof, the ceiling of the apartment above. If I tear into it, I tear into the integrity of the construction. So that's why I didn't want no contractor to get into it and tear things apart. Because I end up having to reconstruct it to make it fix, to make it right, to make it stop leaking. I went for years of that roof leaking, leaking, leaking because of that balcony going in there over top of the apartment. So I bought it up to code. Throughout when I was asked you know, if if decking, decking is issue, I didn't know decking was an issue. Right now, this is the first time I've seen, I still like, I give you, I sent you my correspondence that I had with him. The only part deck was even mentioned is the very last if I, if I address the deck.
Dennis, right there, replace, repair the exterior deck porch on the north side or on the south side, pardon me.
It did say south, right?
In that building with foreign commercial code because it is more than two units?
Commercial codes for two?
No.
Greater two, greater than two or five?
Is it one, one?
It's five, less than five is residential, more than five is commercial.
Commercial, residential is one and two favorites in town. Well, it's five in there.
For four.
Okay. Then four, so.
Not now, it's four, always been.
Well, you just said five.
I said less than five.
Any questions for Mr. Heck or is it Dennis?
Well, this, this, this course finals was leading up to bringing it to code with me, between me and him. Every part was, when I started on September right, uh, the weekend of September, I built the stairs, the treads, and I assembled it, I told him I'm proud. He went over inspected it, he said, you need to have a guardrail at forty two. I did that, I made the guardrail at forty two, the headroom clearance at eighty inches was I had to tap into the seat, the the steps go up to a porch and right at that, the the ceiling roof link goes down. And right at that point, I need eighty inches, so I took it into the soffit to gain the eighty inches. So achieved that, achieved the railing height, all the correspondence I had right now has been bringing it up to code. That's the correspondence I have me between him and him, me and him. And I need to do this, this and this and this, and I did this and this and this. He made three inspections after that. And nothing between that correspondence was deck brought up.
But in a, in a brief moment, that's a he just sent, he referenced the south end of them.
That was
Did, so did you address, my question to you is, did you address this request for repair on the south end? Of the day?
It says repair or replace, repair is the option. I assumed I was doing the repair. So repair was an option.
Repair is an option.
That's what I did. My correspondence between me and him was step by step to bring it to code and I did that. I improved the integrity of that steps, to take the wobble out of it. Make stiffen it up and bring it up to a thirty inch handrail and a forty two inch guardrail.
And we just have that photo? We do. That is what he's attaching to. It's not properly attached, it's not properly attached because the lumber he is attaching to is degraded.
Oh, it's, it's solid. It's been under, it's been under roof for many of that time.
The the loose board. You said it had to be notched?
That was a loose board, that's the stringer. The stringer coming up to the very top.
Yeah.
That stringer I didn't notch, the only time I notched it was on the very top.
I'll tell them it's not solid, just out of curiosity.
Well, what I did is
That's not an inch of city bump.
I notched the stringer to fit in between the floor, the floor joists.
Okay.
That's the only notch and I did is the notch and it's attached here and it's attached front and back.
Well, it makes it wobble then, just out of curiosity.
Well, no, it's not. Originally
So you fixed that?
I fixed that up.
Did you go back and show him that?
Well, he didn't see it, he could walk up and down about it.
You gotta call him for a reinspection because he didn't approve it, and I guess is what I'm hearing.
Well, I understand why he's not approving because he he said he wasn't approved. But there was, there was no explanation on that part, so I don't know what that part was, what was not true.
The fact that as I was walking up the last time I did my inspection, the stair treads are actually rocking because they're not properly attached, my toe bumped one of the risers and the riser fell off. You never the, the attachment issue.
I've been attached it, they're attached on the, on the ends with two, two districts.
Your four by fours that are supporting your handrails aren't actually attached to the ground, they're just sitting on it.
The they poured this in a concrete model lift into the ground, it's solid down. I'm setting it on that, that concrete. I can't, I can't coast hole through that concrete.
No, but you can anchor into that concrete and put a connection.
Well, I could put an anchor attachment to it.
So what is it gonna take against, if those is, what I'm hearing it's not up to code? It's not up to code because where he's attaching his stringer is the, the wood is degraded, he needs to replace that.
That rim board?
The, the entire rim board that
Those piece along there, that there?
Yes.
He, I'm talking about a rim board, this board right here.
Right.
Okay, that only goes so far and it ties into this rip over this section. You know, I, I could, I could do that.
The deck material is loose. You replaced one board deck, the last one, I have a video of me standing on and dirt bouncing. I have the board deck here if you wanna see it. Yeah. Right, yeah.
Yeah, that's at the very top.
Well, that
that board took a beating and it's why I put a new board there. So they were talking about that rock between boards.
When did you do that, Dennis? That picture? Ten November fifth, oh, the gap.
That decking comes over and the rest of the balcony is plywood over the roof, over the apartment. So that decking, I could take that decking off, place that if that though.
I, I get, I get what you're saying, I that, that when he's the building inspector, he makes all decisions and you're upset about it. You gotta work together on it.
Well, that's the first conversation I've had about that. There was no mention at this point, my correspondence with him through September and October. I, he never, he never relayed that part to me. He related the apartment issues I need to take care, care of, one, two, three, four, five, six. I took care of those issues. I said.
The original letter that he sent you?
Uh, he didn't send me the original letter. My correspondence was, uh, right off that meeting. My, my first thought was I don't want a contractor on this job because I don't want to fix something. From somebody I don't know who it is.
Sure.
Okay, I generally want to do my own work. From that point on. I tore it down. Bought the lumber in. Put the stringer in. Put the treads, put my cleats on the side, put my treads on. And put my risers on there. Riser is not really serve a purpose. You really don't even need a riser. Riser decks out there in the world, you go out there and decks, you don't even see risers. On decks. The reason why this has to have one. Code requires that you can't have four-inch spear. Uh, go off the tread. That's the newer version of the code. Is that you can't, you can't leave it open because that, that space is about six inches. So I put a, a two-by-six, which is five and a half, uh, leave a little space because then. Melting water has some place to go, go. Another. Code is you can't, you can't block it in. And not, and not leave a space. Because that could trap water, puddle, puddling. See. I've got forty years' experience in construction industry. I have a degree in associate, associate degree in architectural engineering. Okay, I know how to read code. I've been through training. And I haven't been up to two thousand twenty code until now. I read through it. And I researched what would be the better thing to make this deck better than it was before. Uh, solid tread uncut was the best version. And that's how I did it. If you look at the old deck. The old deck was cut. Cut stringers. I thought that option was not a good thing because. When you walk up to it, it has a tendency to do that. This, when I, when I screw in the treads. That stiffens that, stiffens that up. So I get away from that. That sway. That's why I was talking about that sway. So at this point, I, I'm, I'm up to tearing off that. The decking. And replacing it with newer deck. If that deck is that old.
You're saying, you're saying that. With you doing the solid stringers, which I don't have a problem with how you. Form the work on stringer themselves, the treads. But you're saying that replacing them with solid stringer, you made it sturdier and less wobbly.
Right.
I can grab that stringer. About midway and shake the whole thing side to side.
Well, sure you can. It's not steel.
Yeah, but.
You can't get away with that with a, a, a two, a sixteen-foot span.
That's so you have to put something stiffer in.
Well, they're stiffered underneath. If you looked up underneath, there's one by Chris Cross of. Uh, upper to lower. I don't have a picture of it. That's a stiffener. I could put more stiffeners up there, but.
You have to put more stiffeners up there then, because. If I can grab it and just start doing that and shake it, it's notwithstanding lateral force.
Okay. Well, okay.
Go ahead. It, it sounds like to me, to be honest with you. You and Dennis need to get together, figure out what it's going to take to get it passed, or we need to exit the program until it, it's not been able to be resolved.
Okay.
That, that's what I'm saying. He, he's the man that, that knows it. We're here to listen to it. But I think you two just need to get together and work this out. And come to a conclusion and then he'll sign off of it.
Okay, well, I'm not objecting to anything. I, I didn't know about the decking need to replace and I'll, I'll go through, uh. What's not a structural, uh, uh, joy speed in there, replace those.
Dennis, are you? Um, obviously it's not resolved.
It's not resolved.
And so it needs, in order for it being. Client and into code. Obviously work's got to be done and it's got to be inspected and signed on. What? I guess the question would be. To eliminate any confusion, is there anything that we can do? I mean, you did a nice job in the letter. Is there anything more specific we can do to make sure that it's done step by step? And to avoid this kind of conversation?
He's going to have to anchor his post. To the concrete. Footers that he says are in there. Replace this whole rim board. And then. You cut the rafter up.
Anchor post. And then say again, sorry.
You're going to have to replace that.
Rim board.
Rim board.
Replace.
You're going to have to stiffen it up. The lateral movement.
Stiff it.
Refasten. Any loose treads because there's multiple loose treads.
Treads.
The risers are. Like I said, there's loose risers.
All attachments solid.
Hey, so, uh, is it possible, Dennis, to? Itemize what needs to be done? In a communication to avoid the confusion or you talk about what you're doing?
But Mr. Heck sent a cease, desist order. He doesn't want to communicate with us anymore.
Well, that's not what I'm hearing now. I mean, because he's understanding that he had not come, he's not compliant.
I had to, I had a fear of God in me when you said you didn't inspect and show up here. And I look on the agenda, it says. Again. Uh. Action call, what do you call that?
The action has not been closed. It is still open. So it is in order to action. I would rather you come in and discuss it. To where you're here. You know what's going on there, aware of what's happening.
Okay.
Like I said in the one email. You cut the rafter. You said you was going to put a header in there. And.
Well, you said blocking, but I'll put more blocking in there. Well, with code.
You have to pick that up.
You're talking about that.
Attach frost.
Okay. I'll do the blocking in there too.
So what I'm hearing with Councilman Colt strongly encouraging you to work directly with, uh, with Mr. Manuel here. To resolve these is the right action to take. And he's the one that's going to give the blessing. The approvals and all so on and so forth. Dennis is responsible to help ensure the safety. Throughout the city, right? With the buildings to be in code and so on. And that includes structures or outside structures like this. So Dennis is doing his job personally. I, I think he's, he's been very thorough and very conscientious. And I would encourage you to work directly with him, just as Councilman Colt has encouraged you to do.
Right.
And, and I think that Dennis is the one that's going to. Review it, inspect it, approve it, make the recommendations to the Board of Public Works and Safety. He's the one that we listen to. He's the one that understands what needs to be done. You obviously have some understanding what needs to be done as well, and so therefore you guys can talk the same language.
Right.
And so next question is. With what Dennis has shared with you, what needs to be done, when will it be done?
Uh. I work full-time job. And I got issues with other apartments. I, I just put two furnaces in and I just opened a sewer line. But you could give me about sixty days or ninety days. You know, by the end of the year, whatever.
What do you feel, what do you think?
I, I feel thirty days, sorry.
We have a thirty-day recommendation. Comments from the members?
I agree with that. This has been going on really since September, right?
June, June, June twenty-fifth was the original order to take action.
Now, what does thirty days count today?
It could start counting.
I recommend rather than a, a. Well. Need to look at a calendar. Um, what, what I want to avoid is an issue where the thirty days is up and Dennis is required to take action. Before your next, in between your meetings.
Yeah.
So I, I might recommend that, um. The first meeting in December, your meeting is December eighth.
Yes.
That you set down as a deadline.
I would agree with that.
Okay, so. A recommendation from the city attorney for December eighth. You agree with that, Dennis? So I'm looking for a motion.
Remove.
Back it. We have a motion and we have a second. To extend. Till December the eighth. So the first meeting in December, which is December the eighth.
Right.
We need to have this matter resolved completely.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
I understand that. He's going to send me these lists. Are you?
Uh, it will be Wednesday before I get it.
Okay, I just wanted you.
You have to understand. So we have a motion and we have a second. We have any further discussion? So all in favor of the motion to have this project completed by December eighth, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Heck, thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's, that's really all I had for tonight. Um. The only other thing. Three ten North Michigan Street. They're still grinding away at it. I just didn't. Inspect it on the building. Friday, I don't remember, Thursday. Um. I met Mr. Patel went to Red Rock last week. Informed him I still need my reports, still needs to get his inspections done. If they get everybody out and he put a security fence up to keep people from getting in.
I saw that.
Um, the only other thing is. We did get the report back on. The point. And it does have asbestos. So once I get some estimates on that, I'll be coming back for additional appropriations.
So, thank you.
For, for the demolition?
To. Get rid of the asbestos before the demolition.
Okay.
Asbestos removal is on the city.
Chief Holland? Good evening. Uh, I just wanted, I know a few months ago I came to you just about wanting to get rid of a couple of our older pieces of equipment, the ambulance. Um, and an engine. I'm still working on the engine, but I would like, um, I talked with, uh. Mr. Huyan about doing maybe a, like a sealed bid type auction for the ambulance. Um, and doing it that way. Just put out a notice for that. Excuse me. Um, so I'd like to move forward with that. Um, I think the engine I may have a buyer for possibly another municipality, but, uh, most likely it wouldn't be until the springtime. So I've gathered some comparisons for that, an appraisal to kind of see what the worth is on the engine.
How old is the ambulance that you questioned?
And that ambulance is, um. It's early two thousands. Yeah, it's, it's, it's the oldest one. It's the one that just got replaced by Medicaid eighty-two.
Is it in the background or is it still?
It's, no, it's, yeah, it's in the back.
So you're looking to do a silent auction?
Yeah, for, for the, or sealed bid, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, for the ambulance.
Yeah. We need a motion to move forward with that.
It'd probably be good to.
I'll make a motion. He approves the request. A motion to approve their request. Do we have a second?
We'll second that.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Chief Weir? Thank you. Jim Marquet is not here tonight. He's been working hard over the weekend with weather. Uh, did want to mention that they are going to be continuing to work in on the streets, uh, next day or two. And, um, that, that should be going away here with the weather warming up. Then shortly after that, a couple of days later, then the leak pickup will resume. So that might be at the end of the week, early part of next week, obviously weather dependent. And I told him thank you because I have quite a few more leaves for him to pick up. So, uh, much appreciated. Um, and then. Moving on to cemetery, Mike. Mr. Collins?
Good evening. I'd just like to ask your permission to do another burn of our brush pile. And like in the past, I'll just get with Chief Holland and let him know when we do the burn and also, uh, let the county know.
I, I'm sorry. I didn't know you're asking this tonight. So, uh, I will tell you that. We recently had a meeting with IDEM and, uh, they pointed out to us that it's actually not legal for. The city to do a controlled burn up.
So what are our options?
Um, the options are to either, uh. Hire a contractor to do a curtain burn or to dispose of the material through non-burning method. And I can do some more research on what those options are. Um, I wasn't really prepared for this. Like I said, I, I. Didn't have a chance to talk to Mike. I didn't know he was going to ask this tonight, but that did come up recently in a meeting of loophole that, uh, you cannot do that.
Think I know why, where that originated from. Well, then.
But I, I can get with Mike and we can figure out other options for.
Prefer that, yes.
All right.
All right, thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Interesting, learn something. Mr. Hyde?
Nothing at night, your honor. Thank you.
Nothing?
Well, I, I do want to thank, uh, Mr. Marquet and his crew for cleaning the streets so well and. So we could all get around today. So.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Bill, anything for the. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Mr. Huyan?
So in your pack, you have a proposed settlement agreement with NIPSCO to resolve the outstanding issues for Hoam Drive. And actually Dan has done the lifting on this. Um, he spent a lot of time going back and forth. With NIPSCO and the contractors and the engineers to try to resolve these outstanding issues. Um, this is the final point we've reached and they've proposed this settlement agreement. I don't know if you have anything to add, Dan, or if you have any questions for Dan?
Stay right here until they have a question for me.
Um, I would like to point out that it is titled a confidential settlement agreement. And as you read it, you'll see language in there that says that the city is not to disclose the terms of the agreement. However, um, as you know, we are subject to Indiana's, um, Access to Public Records Act and open door laws. And I was very explicit with them, informing them that we cannot have a confidential settlement agreement. That it does become a public record, that you would have to approve it in a public meeting. And, uh, they indicated in writing. That they understand that, but they still wanted to leave the confidential language in the agreement for whatever reason. Uh, the only practical thing that might mean is if we ever receive a public records request. For a copy of the agreement, we will have to notify NIPSCO before we. Uh, honor that request. So it might take a day or two to fulfill the request rather than the instant electronic fulfillment that we normally do. Um. Other than that, the language is in there saying that, uh, it can be, um. Shared if required by law and obviously Indiana law requires us to do that as a public record.
Well, there you have it. So I'm looking for a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Okay.
We have a motion and we have a second. Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Um. We'll, we'll do this, uh, by roll call.
Call?
Yes.
Hecker?
Yes.
Verner?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Westenberg is absolutely.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Okay, um. Moving on to requests, uh, we have an item on here, item, uh. For the directional signs that, uh, been requested. Uh, Jim Marquet is working with, uh, some individuals for gathering information. So I'd like to leave this table until he comes back with the next meeting with more information. And then we have a street closure request going.
Good night.
Mr. Chutman is here this evening. And a request from the Marshall County American Two-Fifty Committee. Mr. Chutman has. Is asking to close South Michigan Street from near Webster School north to either LaPorte Street or Garrow Street. Ending at River Park Square on July fourth, twenty twenty-six. For parade to celebrate the twenty-fifth anniversary of the Declaration of Independence.
It's a little over. Twenty-fifth? Two hundred fifty.
Two hundred fifty. What did I say? Twenty-five? Close enough.
What's two hundred years? Eric, but none are always made people remove their hands.
You're absolutely right. You're absolutely right. Uh, yes, we were, I'm, I'm on be, here on behalf of the American Two-Fifty Committee, Marshall County. Um, and we've been. It's a nation, nationwide effort to celebrate the two-hundred-fiftieth birthday of the United States through the Declaration of Independence. Um. The first event that we, uh, can.
The first event that we, uh, conducted has been too light. Uh, ceremony out of the courthouse that celebrated Paul Virginia's ride, um. In April of seventeen seventy-five. Uh. And. We're now focused on and we decided to, if, if with, with the, uh, obviously board works, city of Plymouth's permission to conduct a, um. A, um, um, parade on July fourth. Um, that's a Saturday, July fourth of twenty twenty-six is a Saturday. And, um. The idea is to just come from west Webster School north and then either Laporte or Garrow Street into, uh, River Park Square. Uh, they would be having. Or closing up, uh, our idea would be to, uh, coordinate it with their closure of. Of the, the, um. You know, the farmer's market on Saturday morning. Um, and there could be all sorts of other activities planned, um. But we haven't got that far. We just need to get to the point of. Permission that yes, this, this is a go to. To do the. Parade. That's the request.
So actually from Webster School.
See what? Yeah.
It, 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 so it's basically a parade that starts and it won't be shut down. More than what I think.
I would think, um, not more than an hour or two.
Depends upon how many participants it gets in the parade.
That's true. We're going to be very strict about it. It's going to be focused on that era. Um, or just, you know, that, that, that the theme is ju, uh, is the Declaration of Independence.
The reason I was asking is because from Webster School, there's only really one entrance to get downtown. Could you think we could make that work, John? Or is that something that?
Guess it depends on. Well, it's no different than Blueberry when they shut down for the song.
Okay.
They shut down for three hours. Two and a half.
It's the same thing. You'd be okay.
Okay. I think that's good.
We run into an issue, Jeff, with, um, from Laporte to Garrow being State Road seventeen. Um, if it comes all the way to Garrow, then yes. If it turns on Laporte, that's a good question. We'd have to, uh, check with NDOT to see. But I, again, I don't think it'd be any different than the other activities downtown that temporarily closed Michigan Street. Um, they could apply for.
Get your permit, right, Doc?
Okay.
For that. I just want to be clear on that. I'll make a motion. We approve the request.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nelson. Alright, moving on to other business, seeing none. I will, uh, approval claims. I have number eight. Motion to approve the claims.
I'll move.
The mo, motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item nine, acceptance of communications.
I'll move to approve the acceptance or to prove the communication in our packet.
Motion to approve the communication. Do we have a second?
Second.
You have a second?
You will second, please.
Wayne?
Thank you.
Quiet guy.
Quiet guy. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And item ten.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, everybody. We'll take about five minutes before we start the next meeting.
Uh, cities around Northern Indiana, and they were significantly more than the three percent increase that. We were able to negotiate and there was no guarantee if we put it out to bid, the public may not be able to honor the three percent. They. If they had to bid competitively, so.
Was that three percent over five years or three percent over a year?
It's three percent each year over the five-year contract.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for Jeff? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion on second reading.
I move that except third minutes under twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two fifty-one.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam, Clerk Treasor, roll call vote, please.
Councilman called?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Craftwall?
Yes.
Long and Eckler?
Yes.
Milner?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
That passes on second reading. I'll entertain a motion for third reading.
Make a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two fifty-one on third reading.
Okay.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk Treasor, roll call, roll call vote, please.
Councilman called?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Craftwall?
Yes.
Long and Eckler?
Yes.
Milner?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
That passes. Okay.
Um, looking down the agenda, unless council members have something else, I believe next item is the proposed job description for a part-time firefighter. And I'm actually going to turn it over to Jen Klingerman, our HR manager, because she's been doing the work on this.
Good evening. Yes, so the fire department is requesting a part-time firefighter. To be entered in the salary ordinance. Um, from my understanding, we used to allow volunteer firefighters to pick up shifts. Um, to utilize them for coverage. And I'm not exactly sure what happened, but that had since stopped. This was several years ago. This is just simply allowing those part-time firefighters who are not EMT certified, allowing them to once again pick up shifts by putting them in the salary ordinance. Um, could we currently have part-time EMT? B, part-time EMTA and part-time paramedic, but we do not have a part-time firefighter position. So that does not allow those volunteers that are just volunteer firefighter certified to pick up shifts. This is just opening that. Option up to them as well. We do have several volunteers that have reached out that have. Offered to pick up shifts, but once again, they're only firefighter certified.
So when we're talking shifts, are we talking twenty-four hour shift? Or are we talking twelve-hour shifts?
Uh, they could be either or.
So would it be? So, yeah, please, thank you. So the, the. Obviously, we're talking twenty-four hour shifts for our full-time firefighters now. But if I have a part-time individual coming in. Is there a specific? Yeah, I, I hear the either or, but I mean, how do, how would you break it down? Would it be twelve hours or twenty-four? Or is it going to be six, twelve?
Uh, we probably would never drop down to like a six. It'd probably be twelve or and or twenty-four, um. Say if a firefighter was off, um. Then that would be because someone, especially in a part-time position, maybe they can only work twelve hours. And if we have to go twelve hours. And then either have someone else come in for the other twelve, or maybe have to just do without a. That one spot for the other twelve, then we would handle that too. Um, this is just to help us try to cover where. Um, we can't do it. Our full-time, I have a couple of full-time people that. Um, enjoy working and will come in and pick up shifts, but I have a lot of others that. Get exhausted doing it or have other things to do and they don't have time to pick up shifts. Um. Right now, we're limiting. The people that we do have to work part-time because. They, right now, according to salary ordinance, it requires a medical certification to work. Um, it's just, that's the way it's always been. I, even when we had firefighters work before, I. Don't believe we only had a firefighter specific spot. They were just working it, um. At some point years ago, they took that capability away. Um, so right now we do go times where we don't have anybody, uh, filling a shift, uh, just. Simply because of the need and I don't mandate anyone to come in to just cover if one person is off or something. So, um, but the need is still there as we're running. Again, more calls than ever. Already, right now, we are on pace to. Run close to a hundred and fifty calls more this year than we did last year. And every year, or about the last four years, has been a record year for the fire department. Um, and it just keeps getting worse and worse.
Did I hear you say that? We're not allowing your volunteers to do this?
No, the volunteers can, as long as they have a medical certification.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so currently we only allow EMT volunteers to pick up shifts because that's all our sal, salary. Yeah, so currently we only allow EMT volunteers to pick up shifts because that's all our salary ordinance has. So this is just opening up that option for the volunteer firefighters to also pick up shifts.
And real refresh me, what, um. What would their wage be at this point? What, how would that be classified?
Uh, well, the way we're, the way we're looking at it is, um, a firefighter. Um, right now we would look at putting in like about sixteen dollars and eighty-two cents an hour, which is what currently our firefighter EMT basics are making. Um, with that, that's where also we're looking to. Uh, want to raise the salaries of our part-time paramedics, advanced EMTs and basic EMTs because. Um, even though we are the biggest department and run the most calls, we. Pretty much have the lowest part-time rate of any department around us. Um, and with that, we are actually losing some part-time people, we have part-time people that work for us. That prefer working other places because they're getting more. They're getting paid more at those other places such as Culver, Lakeville, um, Summit, La Paz and Argus, so. Uh, with that, if, I don't know if you have those numbers at all, um. Currently the EMT basics are at sixteen eighty-two, we would like to raise that to twenty dollars and eighty-two cents. Uh, the EMT advanced seventeen ninety-one. And raise that to twenty-one ninety-one. And then the medics are currently at nineteen twenty-two and we'd like to take them to twenty-five twenty-two. Uh, they are, especially the medics, uh, they deserve that higher rate, they are responsible for a lot when it comes to medical care, they're, um, both their license and. Just their skill level is way above, uh, any other certifications that we can have.
That's a sep- that's a separate.
Yeah, I'm just giving you information on that.
I was gonna clarify that, so what's in front of you tonight is simply the job description, create that job description. The next step will be to amend the salary ordinance and then you can, uh, have a discussion, make a determination on whether to. Keep that rate at the current part-time rate or whether to make the adjustments. Okay. Any other questions or any comments?
I, I guess I just couldn't. In the requirements or the job description, it, it says that you got to have, so you're working both sides of the boat, not just the fireside, they need the firefighter one and two. And they also need the certifications as a paramedic or an EMT.
Uh, well, for which, not for what we're proposing tonight with the new job description, the new job description is. Solely just for someone that has firefighter one and two. And so they can, what they can do is they can operate. With the fire trucks on all levels, just like they always do, the other thing they wouldn't be able to do is they would be able to drive an ambulance. For us if needed, they just wouldn't be able to actually care for a patient. But we would have other people there to do that, but it's just to. Give us that ability to continue keeping up our staffing and get out the door as fast as we can, which is our number one priority.
Okay, so, okay. Thank you.
So these positions, new position could be. Filled by one of our volunteers or someone from another fire department.
Correct.
Certified, right?
Correct, um, our main goal though is to utilize those within our own department, we like, uh. HR said we have plenty of, uh, volunteers currently who are firefighter certified only and they've, uh. All said that they would be more than willing to help us out if they could.
And so we're again, not, not we're clarifying, but we're talking with the intent of a twelve or twenty-four hour shift.
Yes.
So really potentially this could favor. City money by not paying those time overtime, correct?
Correct, yeah, because that's been my goal this whole year is to, um. If there's only one position open to allow that to be for part-time or if a full-time person filled it, they were putting their hours in their comp bank versus. Getting it paid out, thus saving on our overtime, um, if I did have two people off that put us at minimum staffing, then I was allowing for a person to work for overtime.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we. Pass. The resolution, I don't see the resolution has a number.
It's not a resolution, it's just approving the job description.
Okay, I'm approving the part-time. Firefighter job description.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, madam clerk treasurer, we'll go ahead and do this by roll call vote.
Sure, councilman called?
Yes.
Eckers?
Yes.
Craftwall?
Yes.
Long and Eckers?
Yes.
Milner?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Starr?
Yeah.
That passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, resolutions presented by the city attorney of court treasure.
I think I'll do it.
Unless you want it to.
Be my guest.
Okay, so the first one is resolution number twenty twenty-five dash eleven seventy-seven. A resolution of the common council of the city of Plymouth to approve the application of loyal order of Moose Plymouth, Indiana lodge number seven four one. For a commercial revitalization rebate program grant, you have the application materials in your packet, I believe we have representative of Moose come on up and answer any questions.
You state your name and address, please.
Stephanie Thomas, eight two nine five seventh road Plymouth, Indiana four six five six three.
So. Walk, walk us through this, what you're looking to do here.
We, um, the building was originally built, I think in nineteen fifty-five and it's been added on to and. Uh, replaced and roofwork done. The portion that we're needing to do now is the oldest portion of the building of the roof. And we are having real severe leaks, we write the one spot that we are having issues with and it's, uh. Needing to be repaired greatly. And we have, um. Gotten, uh, five different, I think we submitted three or four to y'all of, um. Appraisals, estimates of doing the repairs, um, just doing that one section. Instead of the full building at the moment, because they all of them said that the other portion to the, if you're facing the building. Uh, it's cut into like thirds, two-thirds is in good condition. The third that's directly above our social quarters is what's needing to be replaced or repaired.
Amen. Okay, any other questions or any questions at all? And I'll entertain motion.
I'm, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash eleven seventy-seven.
Second, we have a motion and a second, are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, madam clerk treasurer, roll call vote please.
Councilman called?
Yes.
Eckers?
Yes.
Craftwall?
Yes.
Long and Eckers?
Yes.
Milner?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
That passes.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it, um, just to give you a little, we're always looking for members. Uh, we do do, just to give you a quick spill if you don't mind, um, uh, Moose, if you're not familiar, is a family organization. Our goal is to help children, uh, Moose Heart, which is right outside of Chicago, Illinois, in Moose Heart, Illinois, it's its own little town, has a school, homes, church. And that's where we support not only local, but we do support them, um. We, uh, have donated this summer, I'm very proud, I just started as the new administrator in the, uh, first of March. And we donated to the Boys and Girls Club, we have donated to, um. Uh, the FOP, we have also fixing to submit a check to the Marshall County Humane Society, which is one of my things, so. They get money from us to support, so if you need a dog, we're supporting and vaccination, nothing, come get one. But thank you, we appreciate it, we do try to do stuff for the community and we hope to, like y'all, come check us out. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff continuing on?
Yes, next is resolution number twenty twenty-five dash eleven seventy-eight. A resolution of the common council of the city of Plymouth to approve the application of Kip Cook for a commercial revitalization rebate program grant. And Mr. Cook is anxious to answer your questions as well, sure.
So are there any questions for Mr. Cook?
This is two oh four North Michigan Street?
Yeah, just a couple doors down here.
His office.
I'm in between the two jewelry stores.
Gotcha.
Yeah, basically I bought the building, um, in January, it'll be thirty-five years ago. Thirty years ago I put a new roof on it. And the back quarter section of it, the closest to the alley. We've got some pretty severe leakages back there, um, the rest of it, when they inspected it, they just suggested that we just do a hole in the roof.
I'll attest that there's a problem in the back, because if you try to walk out the back door, you might cripple over a bucket.
That's right, correct, we got buckets in the back room. Thank you.
Very soon.
Councilman Morrow. I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash eleven seventy-eight.
Second. We have a motion and a couple of seconds, what was I telling you? Okay, any other, uh, questions or comments for Kip? Is for anybody else? Okay, I just couldn't place the. Hearing none, madam clerk treasurer, roll call vote please.
Councilman called?
Yes.
Eckers?
Yes.
Craftwall?
Yes.
Long and Eckers?
Yes.
Milner?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kip.
Thanks, Kip.
Continuing on Jeff.
Hey, you do have another resolution on your agenda, resolution number twenty twenty-five dash eleven seventy-nine, but we're going to skip that tonight, uh, we're. Reworking that and, uh, it'll be back in a different form for your next meeting.
Okay, well, we have other business coming up here, uh. Pride card update? Ed here?
Yes.
Ed Rodriguez, one one seven four six Longdale, Plymouth, Indiana. Uh, so it was last year that we approached you guys to give you an update on the pride card, which. Our past council member, uh, acronymed, um, so we're here on behalf of La Bosnida as an organization, we're a five oh one C three here in town. Uh, our mission statement reads, um, La Bosnida works focusing on the needs of the communities without distinguishing race, origin. Uh, where am I here? Or religion based on empathy and integrity to advance towards developing a better community. We've been working really, really hard, particularly with the political climate with which taken place in our country. Uh, we believe that we become the resource for our local community in helping with translations, interpretations. And truly trying to bridge our community. Uh, we advocate on several issues that we feel are very important, not just to us, but to the entire community. Uh, primarily public safety, transportation, education, health, immigration and obviously economic development. Uh, this past year, uh, in twenty twenty-five, early in twenty twenty-five, we offered Spanish classes to English speakers. Uh, we had three, uh, teachers that, that volunteered their time. Uh, several police officers, uh, several teachers, uh, several leaders in the community participated. Uh, it gave us the opportunity to, to, uh, to, uh, give six high school scholarships. For folks that we have been really trying to get into post-secondary education. It's really not just about going to university for us. The trades are very important for us and we push those probably harder than going to a, a four-year school. Uh, tonight we're here actually to provide you guys an update on where we're at with the pride program, the identification card. That, uh, truly offers our residents, uh, the opportunity to, to fill a prescription. To obtain a, um. Public library card, uh, they can access the schools. It's things that you and I take for granted, that these folks don't. They don't qualify for a state issued ID. Mainly because of one category, they don't have a social security number. And so they are truly what I've said back in twenty twenty, when some of you, uh, passed the resolution for us. These folks are on the margins of society in our own community. So since twenty twenty, we have generated over six hundred identification cards for our local residents. Uh, we partnered with La Casa de Amistad up in South Bend. Primarily because they were the ones that began the program and they had the, uh, the printer. So we started doing our own research to find that printer. But we quickly realized it's twelve to fifteen thousand dollars to buy this, this printer. So we've been working very, very closely with the Knights of Columbus, they've been very generous to us. And they, they helped us, we're terrible grant writers, I'll tell you that. And it's because of that, you know, we took our shot at the Marshall County Community Foundation. To help us, uh, with traveling, uh, we've been working very, very hard. In trying to pass a driving privilege card bill proposal. Uh, we've gone to Columbia City, Leeganear, uh, I can't even remember how many, as far as Bloomington. So down to IU, they welcomed us, uh, we had, we, we actually achieved fifteen resolutions. Just like you folks passed for us, showing support for, for the residents in Indiana. Anyway, so we move on to, like I said, the Amistad, we brought six hundred individuals, uh, to the tune of twenty-five dollars each. In effect, what we did is we handed, like I said, the Amistad fifteen thousand dollars that they took up, back up to South Bend. So the Knights of Columbus were generous enough to work with us. And we recently, in the past six weeks, have purchased our own printer now. We didn't buy the very nice one, we had to start with the generic one, so we bought one for three thousand dollars, that's all we could afford. But if you do the math. And you start to see really the, uh, the reasoning behind this printer is so that La Bosnida can self-sustain. Uh, we are continuing our work, not just in Plymouth. Uh, Logan Sport has asked for help with an identification card, Bremen is yearning for this. Um, we feel that Leeganear will ask for us, Warsaw will ask for us. And so if we can start to be the ones that are not only bringing in the residents for these cards. But we're also generating our own income. So that we don't have to worry about, uh, grants, we don't have to worry about these things. At this point, we have some folks in our, our own community that are really struggling. And unfortunately, they don't have the wherewithal to come to folks like you, like you to, to ask for help. They don't qualify for a lot of the programs and so this is the reason that we're trying to help. In whatever form we can. So we're not here to ask for any money. Uh, nor to, uh, ask for membership to the Moose, although I think I'm a member, I'm not real sure. But we're here to update you guys so that you guys know that La Bosnida continues to work. We want to thank you guys, uh, because it was right here in these chambers where we learned what, how this works. Uh, we have confronted some really, really difficult situations with city councils and town councils. And the experience that we learned here. Uh, proved that we can be patient, we can be professional, we don't have to hate one another. And I really appreciate that we start with prayer, uh, in these meetings because we're all God's children at the end of the day. And we have to take care of our own little community, forget Washington DC and forget all this other stuff that's taking place. Um, through some of the efforts of, of the mayor, through the comprehensive plan, we've also started an empowerment committee. Uh, we have several people we meet once a, once a month. A lot of terrific ideas have come from that. Uh, we're truly are building a bridge for these communities. Where people are no longer scared to shake someone's hand, they're no longer scared to say, hey, my kid is doing nothing. Uh, eighty-year-old, uh, neighbor, would you like my kid to come over your yard? Uh, we've had people on the other side that say, hey, you know what, if your kid needs to go to school, I'm willing to take him to school. If you guys need to go to the grocery store, I will take you to the grocery store, so you don't find yourself at this anxiety of driving. Getting pulled over, get put in jail. Uh, cars being impounded and their life just starts to spiral downward. So again, we appreciate everything that you guys as a council does for us, our attorney, our mayor. Uh, everything that's taken place seems to be falling, uh, right in line with what a little community like ours. And we thank you. And if you're not on board with us, we encourage you to, to, to come and visit us, come and sit at one of our meetings. And listen to how this is really coming together, it's really, really nice to see in our little town. Of how this is coming together, did you have anything to say? Oh. Yep. Because we have this, uh, printer. We're looking outside of the ID. We've been working with Chris at the, uh, Marshall County Neighborhood Center. Uh, to try and, and help them with the resources that, that they offer, to try and deter folks from abusing. And just taking things that they don't even need and it is happening. And so we put this idea together for Chris to try and help them to, uh. We're also going to talk to, uh, to the Lighthouse Autism Center, maybe some nursing homes. We could do so many things with these cards, if you folks have any ideas, we would. We could do so many things with these cards. If you folks have any ideas, we would welcome them. Uh, again, this is uh, uh, some kind of an income for us. None of us get paid a salary, none of us. And so it's all on a volunteer basis. And so we do everything we can to try and generate money and, you know, we're not ashamed to ask. Um, give you a real quick uh, uh, rundown of some of the things that we have done. We put together a uh, a coloring book for the children. Uh, we stopped using the word diversity, because that's not what this is about. The coloring book is a cross-cultural coloring book, so that the children. Come, hey, you know, these people seem to be like us. You know, I didn't know that, yeah, that's that's how we are. We're all the same people. Uh, we came up with some cards that neighbors can hand one another, you know, offering assistance. Uh, because of the language barrier, you know, it's translated. Um, so we're doing so many things, you know, that uh. That we want to again, thank you guys for being the, really the the foundation. This is where where we started. And we've launched La Bosnida into a lot of different places. And so did you have anything you wanted to say?
Through the empowerment committee.
I need to come up here.
Through the. Through the empowerment committee, um, we are also educating. Members, um, the community regarding the cultural differences, you know, um. Explaining a lot of definitions regarding what. Some of us really don't know what the terms are. And this empowerment committee is growing. It started out with maybe. I don't know, seven? And we have around twenty-five, thirty individuals that come once a month to learn, to share. And really understand and communicate with with different people, okay?
Nice.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for us?
I do. How are you working with the healthcare? With the Hispanic community?
Uh, so again, it's kind of tricky, because you know, qualifications for, you know, for different programs and things like that. Um, we've been working with the um, it's council on aging, folks out there on on Harrison. Um, to try and encourage folks to come out, you know, participate in things like that. But these are real struggles, because people are not accustomed to that. Uh, you know, we're the type of uh, our our culture seldom places folks in nursing homes. People stay in the homes until they pass. And so, you know, it's very family oriented, so trying getting them to branch out and, you know. It's not as easy as what we may think, but that doesn't stop us. You know, we're we're continually working to try and get people, I think. Uh, part of what we're after is to educate folks, that it's okay. Uh, you know, we just recently with the um, Episcopal Church, right? Uh, so at the Episcopal Church, we had a St. Thomas, we had a uh, cross-cultural dinner. Uh, very, very nice. We had a a gal whose husband is being deported. And to hear her story, I mean, we think we know what's taking place through this process. We have no idea. How they're moving these walnuts. People have no clue where they're at, people have no clue of the conditions. I mean, to hear this lady's testimony was something else. So, you know, but uh, with our seniors, you know, it's, that's a little difficult to try and get that, so we're really focused on the children. More than anything, to try and and break barriers and, you know, try to get them to understand, you know. Participate in extracurricular activities at schools, uh, programs, uh, even the Boys and Girls Club and things like that. You know, these are things that we need to to break through. So.
Do you have a question, Kip? Any other questions or comments, Fred?
Well, again, thank you guys for everything that you guys have done for us and today we're not here to ask for anything, but we may be back. Thank you.
We'll share something else, though. I don't know if you noticed the card. It's red to represent Plymouth, okay, because. These other ones that they had, South Bend had, or don't. You know, gray. But um, because of um. What councilman had suggested as far as the pride card, this goes very well with Plymouth. Red color. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, look, we have an update or annual update from uh, Mr. Garner.
Good evening, Jack Garner, Marshall County EMA Director, one one two West Jefferson Street, Plymouth. I'm gonna pass out something for you.
Thank you, sir.
You, Jack? I'll let you keep the card that's attached, but I have to give it back. I got one for you, too? All right, I'm here to extend a personal invitation to a EMA Public Safety Town Hall. So that's the flyer that I've passed out to you. On Thursday, December fourth, um, there'll be a session in the afternoon from one to three and another in the evening from six to eight over at the county building. Um, which is just kind of a chance to. Uh, get together as all of the public safety officials in Marshall County. So that's going to be our first responders. Our elected officials, school safety officials, public health. Um, and just kind of have a a conversation about what emergency management should look like in this county. Um, I started in that position about two years ago, fresh out of college, and so there's been a lot of learning that's had to go on over these last two years, a lot of training that's had to be completed. Um, but now it's time to hit the ground running. Um, so I have a lot of different ideas that I've bounced um, between both my advisory board and the county commissioners. For projects over the next few years for this agency, and I want to get some public input on that. So the first hour of that is going to be. A little bit of powerpointing, um, me explaining what emergency management is. Um, and then talking about my vision for the agency, and then that second hour is going to be a chance for everyone to have this conversation. Um, about what my agency can do for you. Uh, I think there's been, especially with towns and the cities, a little bit of distance between that department at the county level and what happens at the city level. And I want to kind of build that back up, right? The county is not here to take over for you and at time of emergency, you're here to provide resources for you. Um, and so building that understanding and that trust between the two partners, um, I think is good, and I think this would be a good opportunity to do that. Um, I am. Not going to spoil much for that one, um, because I want to get you there, um, but if you do have any questions, I'm happy to answer those tonight, too.
Is this the first type of uh, first meeting of this type? Wasn't there something a year ago or a little over a year ago, similar to this?
Um, we had back in May, and I think you were at that one, um, out of the United Way.
Correct.
Um, that was more of like a training for elected officials about um, kind of that. What your role is in an incident command type scenario.
Yeah.
Um, this one's going to be a bit more collaborative and talking about, you know, the hyper-local focus here in Marshall County. Um, I will say that this is, this is a first of this that I can think of, um, and I've got. Elkhart County Commissioners coming, Fulton County Commissioners coming with their EMA Directors to try to see if this is something they want to do in their counties, too, so. As great of a turnout as we can get, the better.
Great. Any questions for Jack?
All right, thank you, guys, and drive safe. We're still under a travel advisory. Um, yeah. Uh, open door loss. With the.
Councils. Good question.
Getting together. So that's why, another reason why I split it into two sessions. So as long as the majority of you are not in the same session, I believe we should be good.
So someone has to sit out.
Someone sits out or, yeah.
We'll figure that out later.
Yep, same thing we got to work through at Commissioners and Councils, so, yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, James. Good. Looking for a one Marshall County update, Jack? Comprehensive plan?
We've not had a one Marshall County Board meeting since your last meeting, so uh, I'll save that update for your next meeting. Um, comprehensive plan update, uh, Ty. Um, could not be here tonight, uh, he had another obligation. Um, really, comprehensive plan, the the work has been spread out among these subcommittees that are doing really fantastic things. I mean, you heard. Norma and Ed talked about the empowerment committee and the turnout that they have. Um, some of the newer examples, Jack has actually been helping to organize a young adult committee. To uh, get together and talk about uh, ideas for the future of the city. Um, Ty brought me a stack about that thick of more proposed amendments to our zoning and subdivision ordinances. To streamline things and and make it both more consistent and easier to navigate. So we're seeing a lot of work at the committee level. Um, I'll let. Ty give you a more comprehensive update when he comes back, but uh, it's it's a lot of good progress. Um, I don't remember. If Ty shared with you, um, we recently did an evaluation uh, reviewing all of the goals. In the stated in the comprehensive plan, and seventy-two percent of what's in the plan. Has either been completed or is currently underway. So we're already talking about how our twenty forty plan is going to have to be updated much, much sooner than we expected, because we're finishing the work we set out to do. But it's it's great progress. Any questions for me? One last chance. All right.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, item number six, privilege of the floor directed to agenda items. The. Comments? Hearing none. Moving on to item number seven, acceptance communications.
Remember that we accept the communications in our packet?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further? Hearing none, all signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. And item eight.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Thank you, everybody. Three and a half.